Good morning, everyone. We'll go ahead and get started. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is located on the north wall of the legislative chambers, and there is also an automatic external defibrillator available in the back of the legislative chambers. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll begin with the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Tusha.
Here.
Madam Chair.
Here. Item A: Approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, February 4th, 2014. And item B: Call for a meeting and set Tuesday, February 25th, 2014, as a date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rules or increased value on property.
Motion to approve, Andy.
Second.
Please vote. Citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we have one resolution approving applications for tax exemption on motor vehicles recommended for approval by the county treasurer.
Motion to approve, Ms. Jaren.
Any questions or comments? We'll move to the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Corrections. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Tusha.
Here.
Madam Chair.
Here. Item 1: Approval of the minutes of the Board of Corrections meeting held Tuesday, January 14th.
Motion to approve.
Any questions or comments? Please vote. Item 3: Report from -- or citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Corrections about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will hear the report from the Department Director, Dr. Mark Foxall. And, Mark, I will leave it to you if you want to move around the action item before the full report since we have quite a number of people here.
Okay. Commissioner, thank you for -- thank you very much. I'd like to call -- I'd like to call to your attention our action item 4A. This is a resolution recognizing the contributions of Barb Gillan-Glaser and dedicating the Department of Corrections Law Library to Barb in her name, in her memory. I'd like to call up members of Barb's family. Gus Glaser, her husband, is here. Barb's mom, Donna Gillan, is here. Barb's sisters, Cheryl Jensen and Terri Altman's, is here. And Barb's nephew, Austin Altman, is here. If you could please come forward.
Before we proceed with the resolution, I'd like, Mike, to read a few words that were dedicated to Barb almost a year ago.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mike Myers, Community Corrections Manager for the Department of Corrections. Shortly after we lost Barb, you know, we naturally took stock of all of the -- all that she meant to us, both personally and professionally. And one of the things that we did immediately that I don't even know that the family is aware of is we were in the midst of compiling our strategic plan for reentry. And we decided to dedicate that plan to her memory. This plan has been distributed to communities from the east coast to the west coast, north and south. And there's a full page dedicated to Barb in this plan. So everybody across the country who's seen this will know what Barb meant to us. And I'm going to go ahead and read that page to you this morning. "The first comprehensive or strategic plan for reentry in Douglas County is dedicated to the memory of Barbara Gillan-Glaser, or Barb at the jail, as she was known to hundreds of volunteers, staff members, and thousands of inmates over the years. She was a pioneer in the profession of corrections. At the time of her tragic death, she had been employed at the Douglas County Department of Corrections for nearly 36 years. She had overseen inmate programming in the jail for 24 of those 36 years. During a time when the profession of corrections was primarily concerned with merely locking people up, without much thought about why an individual committed a crime, or how to prevent them from committing crimes in the future, Barb was implementing programs that address substance abuse, mental illness, parenting skills, positive decision-making, dealing with trauma, domestic violence, and other abuse issues. Barb also started GED and English as a Second Language programs. She started classes to teach literacy, computer skills, and employment skills, and she addressed housing issues as well as health and wellness. Library services grew by leaps and bounds under her direction. She pushed to have the library officer become a certified librarian, and to join a professional association to keep the library operating professionally and to expand its offerings. She solicited donations of books to meet the needs of all reading levels, interests, and languages. Literally thousands of books are donated annually to our library. Barb also oversaw recreational activities, the Law Library. She coordinated the activities of hundreds of volunteers, and contributed her time and effort to many other endeavors. More than being missed for what she did, she will be missed for how she did it. She had an indomitable, paverative spirit. While she knew that not everyone was ready to change, or even wanted to, she never gave up hope that someday they would. Because of her fighting spirit, countless tragedies never happened. Women and men were not further victimized by domestic violence. Children were not neglected or abused. Drunk-driving fatalities never happened. Thefts didn't occur. People were not homeless. And violent acts were not committed. And the list goes on and on. Conversely, formerly incarcerated individuals tucked their own children in at night, engaged in positive relationships, completed educational goals, obtained sobriety, became employed, and lived as responsible and healthy citizens. Barb was very excited about the development of this strategic plan. She passed away one year before she planned on retiring. However, she once said that she may work several more years just to make sure this plan came to fruition. We will never know whether she was serious about delaying her retirement, but her dedication and commitment to reentry can never be questioned. This strategic plan is dedicated to the life and the memory and service of Barbara Gillan-Glaser."
I'd like to read the resolution into the record. "Board of Corrections, Douglas County, Nebraska, resolved, whereas, in remembrance of Corrections Program Administrator Barb Gillan-Glaser during the month of the first anniversary of her death, Douglas County recognizes that Barbara was the longest-serving employee at the Department of Corrections, having served the citizens of Douglas County for over 35 years. And, whereas, Douglas County recognizes that Barbara Gillan-Glaser impacted the lives of thousands of offenders, their families, and the entire Douglas County community in a profoundly positive manner. And, whereas, Douglas County recognizes that Barbara Gillan-Glaser was a pioneer in offender programming to include education, rehabilitation, and reentry. And, whereas, Douglas County recognizes that the Department of Corrections has forever changed for the better as a result of the tireless work and eternal optimism of Barb Gillan-Glaser. And, whereas, Barb Gillan-Glaser was a champion for the rights of offenders and supervised the Law Library of the Douglas County Department of Corrections. And, whereas, Douglas County and the Department of Corrections extend condolences to her husband, Gus Glaser, and to her other family members and friends. Now, therefore, be it resolved by this Board of Corrections that the Law Library of the Douglas County Department of Corrections is henceforth known as the Barbara Gillan-Glaser Law Library, dated 11/02/2014."
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion passes.
And on behalf of the Board, I mean, everything's been said that could be said. We adored her. She was just wonderful to work with. And she's sorely missed, but she will be with us now since we're dedicating the library. And we thank you all for being here this morning. Would any of you like to say anything?
I'd like to say something.
Okay.
Now, I know my family's probably still pretty choked up about, you know, this, but on behalf of all of them, I'd like to thank all of you for, you know, doing all of this. And that's really all I had to say. Thanks.
Thank you. We would like to shake your hands if you could come around the front here. Thank you very much.
I thought I was little.
I was.
We recognize Barb's immediate family members who are here, but also present today are her work family, those who've worked with her very closely. And you'll see in the row behind Officer Earl Hickman, Officer Selena Sanchez, Officer Cindy Ramirez, and Barb Glazeski. They've worked every day together. And because of that core group, people that come into our facility and leave have a better opportunity for success in not making a return visit. So I'd just like to acknowledge them as well, being here today in support of Barb and Barb's family.
Thank you.
Now, I'd like to turn your attention to my monthly report, 11/02/2014. Call to your attention, enclosure number one. Seven months into the fiscal year, we remain under budget. City of Omaha was billed through December 2013, and they have paid 90% of their invoices through November 2013. They have audited invoices through November 2013 and paid audited invoice balances through September 2013, which brings their balance to 333,983,46. Enclosure number two, Community Corrections. The Nebraska Office of Highway Safety has awarded Douglas County grant funding for the pilot of the 24/7 sobriety program. With startup funds secured, preparations have ramped up for the launch. The program is planned to begin in late March after staff are hired, trained, and all necessary preparations are complete. So very pleased to announce that progress. Also, progress is ongoing for the conversion to the new GED model, .com, and the county. Attorney's office are working with the Pearson View Testing Service to implement all technological and contractual arrangements to establish testing centers in the jail and community corrections. We hope to begin testing by April 1. Preparations have begun for full-scale implementation of recidivism risk model -- or, excuse me, assessment. It is planned to implement the instrument fully in March or April to coincide with the launch of the web-based case management system in order to store data gathered during the assessment process. Work release: Clients donated 1,073 hours of community service in January to various public and private charitable organizations. Work release also admitted 60 individuals during the month of January. House arrest: Admitted 107 individuals in January. 468 hours of community service were donated by house arrest clients in January. 32 individuals were admitted to the reentry assistance program in January. Javon McLeod - McLeod was selected as the case manager for RAP. Her duties began Monday, actually, February 3rd. Corrections programs: Seven individuals achieved a GED through programs in December. And Barb Glazeski, thank you very much for that. Pretrial services: 235 offenders were placed during the month. 778 individuals were supervised in January with a 97% compliance rate. 31 offenders were referred for priority prosecution, and 340 bed days were saved this month. Compliance: Enclosure number three. Robert Demond of Just Attention International is onsite. And his fact is, he's present here today. He's present here today. He's onsite, a Just Attention International, and will be providing sexual abuse response training to staff. So we thank him for his services also. Closure number four. Had an award ceremony was conducted in 21 January. Numerous commendations and service awards were presented, and those are enclosed here for your review. Enclosure number six. With respect to our population, we had 1,324 admits, 1,309 releases for the month. Our ADP, or average daily population, was 1,124. The United States Marshall population decreased a bit. The ICE population increased a bit. Felony pretrial population decreased slightly. Misdemeanor pretrial population increased just slightly. Female population decreased, however. Third female housing unit continues to remain open. Enclosure number seven. Medical: Had 1,081 screenings for the month. Physical health assessments: 458. Discharge referrals: 183. And those are up a little bit. And as you know, that's a very, very important program, particularly in light of some of the recent conversations that we've had. Mental health. Closure number eight. Initial psychiatric assessments: 47. Initial mental health assessments: 112. 45 mental health infirmity placements. Number continues to remain high. Make reference to that again, in light of recent discussions. Referrals to community-based mental health services. Outpatient psych: Zero. Mental health and concurrent disorder treatment programs: 30. Mental health therapy: Five. That concludes my comments.
Commissioner Tusha.
Good morning. Again, I want to thank Barb's family for being here today. And I think that's just totally awesome about the Law Library. So again, our condolences and thank you for coming today. Okay, Mark, first of all, congratulations with the seven GED individuals. That's awesome. But that's the last set on the old program for December, right?
That's correct.
Okay. So that brings me into my first question is, now, you've got the new GED model, and it starts April 1st. What are we doing with the students from January to April if they're not -- if the testing doesn't start until April? Are they just in limbo there?
Oh, they're never in limbo.
Well, but you understand --
Mr. Myers?
No, I didn't mean that. But you understand what I'm saying there, you know? Because they can't really do anything to get their GEDs because the testing's not in place. I'm sure they're still studying. I'm sure you guys make sure of that.
We have another array of programmatic opportunities for them to participate in, and community service, and I'll let Mike speak to that.
Okay.
Morning.
Good morning. Mike Myers, again, Community Corrections Manager. We have been implementing the new curriculum, because not only is it changing from a paper-based to a computer-based classroom, the content of the curriculum is also completely overhauled. So those who are in GED are receiving that new instruction. And as soon as we're ready with the testing, you know, we -- it's predicted that, you know, by Metro Community College, who has, you know, oversight over GED in this area, that it'll take several months for people to be ready to test anyway.
Really?
And -- or at least a few months for them to be ready to test. We are -- currently, the ball is in the court of the Pearson View Company. That's the company that will do the testing. We've been working with them on the contract to have an agreement to establish testing centers, and they are working that way through their chain of command. And like I said, all of the technology has been ordered. So I'm predicting by the time we get all of the -- everything in place and the contract that -- April 1st is, you know, easily obtainable. It may be sooner than that, hopefully.
So with you helping them out currently, you still feel it's going to take some of these, the students or the inmates, even a long process, even though they've got a couple of months to learn?
Sure.
Is it that much more difficult?
Well, time will tell. We've been told that the curriculum is much more rigorous than it was before. It takes a much higher skill level to pass the tests, that even though the old model had five separate test areas, and the new model only has four, that the skill level required to pass those tests is such that they predict it'll take longer to pass those four tests than it would in the previous model to pass five.
So let me ask you this. Let's say that they start the process while they're incarcerated, and then they leave, but it's going to take longer, and maybe some of them are going to have to redo it a couple of times. Where will they go after this, and will they have to pay for that then?
One of the -- well, first, one of the advantages to the new model, I'm not sure there are many, to be honest, in my personal opinion, but one of the advantages to the new model is that it is portable. Since it is, everything's web-based, they can take the results wherever they are, and this is nationwide. And they'll be -- so they can continue with their instruction at Metro or Iowa Western. I think Bellevue Public Schools has -- offers GED as well, so they'll be able to continue that process locally if they so choose. As far as paying for the testing, yeah, once they're out, they're going to have to be able to pay for the testing.
So if most of them probably would not be able to afford it immediately when they get out, they can just let it sit where they left off and then take it up at a later date with no problems?
Right. I'm not sure if there's an expiration date on the process from when you pass your first test to how long that test is valid for you taking the last test. I imagine that's a pretty generous period if even there is a, you know, a shelf life to those test results.
How long has this been in process? I mean, has anybody realized that this is going to be a lot more difficult than before? Are they even considering on tweaking it any, or?
That's a good question. It's been in -- it's been -- we've known that this is coming for probably a year or more. However, the developers of the new curriculum and the new testing mechanisms, that process didn't come -- become crystal clear until quite recently. Even meetings late last year with Metro Community College, who's in this business, you know, they had a lot of questions that they just -- we had, that I was asking, that they just didn't have an answer to in terms of how this was actually going to look. And the early indications of how this was going to be actually have changed kind of significantly from what it -- how it's actually turned out.
Okay. Well, I wish all these future students luck on that.
Mm-hmm.
I think they're going to need it. Good thing I'm not going back to school. Thank you, Mike.
Sure.
Okay, Mark.
Just a point before your next question, too. Recall that we're -- something that is important for us to keep in the forefront of our minds is that we are, by nature of a jail, a short-term facility.
Yeah.
So people aren't staying with us long. You know, our average length of stay is 18, 19, 21 days, in that range. So we have to infuse a lot of programming. And obviously, some people in pretrial status are with us much longer than that. But it's real important for us to infuse as much as we can in a relatively short period of time, unlike in a prison environment, you know?
But that's going to be major overload for some of them.
We're going to -- we've got some good staff, and we're going to have to adapt to the new process, but I think we'll be able to do that.
Well, I wish your staff luck on that, too. I think that's awesome. But I wish them both luck on both ends of that. All right. That answers that. Second of all, congratulations on the grant for the funding for the sobriety program. I'm really excited about this. I think this'll, you know, hopefully work in the way that, you know, if they know they have to go get tested and stuff, that'll lessen up the drinking, and then lessen up them out on the streets with everything, and hopefully lessen up, you know, their stay in the jails. But congratulations on that, the grant award on that. That's the -- we knew it was coming, but you know, there's always that little chance that it doesn't make it.
Certainly.
Also, question for you. I noticed in last month, when you came to us, your staffing on hand, I believe it was 376. Now it's down to 374. First of all, even with the low staff, I looked at the stats on here, and the overtime and the vacation is relatively down, so congratulations on that with the low staff. Usually, it turns the other way around. So congra -- I'm actually complimenting you on this overtime this time and not yelling at you for that.
You know, it's a concerted effort. And, you know, from the deputy director to the captains, to the lieutenants, to watch commanders, who are very mindful of the budget and my appearance here every month. Thank you, guys. So everybody's working hard to keep those numbers reasonable. And our jail population in the last week has started to take a dip by almost 50 people or so.
But still, that's a great job to keep all that down. So great job to everyone who's working on doing that. But that does bring me my next question. Now, we just recently hired some new staff in December, and they, you know --
Six.
And -- but yet, you're -- the positions are way down on hand is 374. That, you know, that's major decrease. Even with the new staff on hand, we're still that low. I'm rather surprised on that.
We have -- we've had a couple of resignations of people moving on to other career opportunities. And we do have another -- working on formulation of another class.
And how many's going to be in that class? Now, how many's going to graduate? How many's going to be in the class?
Well, I've not set that class number yet. We're still going through -- finishing up the interview process.
So even with that class, and if some of them drop out or whatever, we may still even have to have another one following this one to get your staff to the level it should be?
Yes, and it depends on how the attrition goes moving into the spring and early summer as well.
Okay.
But typically, we're losing two, two-and-a-half people a month. So we have to -- and as we move into spring, and other opportunities in criminal justice fields come up, we lose staff to those organizations as well. So it's something that we constantly have to stay on top of.
Well, with your population that you currently have, it may be down, but it's a little bit more intense than what it hasn't been.
It's a lot more intense, yes.
Again, I have to give congratulations to you and your staff. We're doing a great job. I really appreciate, really appreciate that. And last but not least, wow, look at all the promotions and anniversaries and commendations and awards. Totally awesome. That is fantastic that, you know, you've got quite a handful, and I just want to say congratulations to everybody for that. That's just wonderful, and thank you for all that.
Thank you, Commissioner.
No other lights? Any -- oh, Commissioner Rogers?
Thank you. Mark, you are the number -- and I'm just wondering, for the future, can you all give -- and it may be relevant for all of them, but particularly the mental health piece, like you got this one. Can you give like a five-month trend? Because I guess the question I have for -- and I'm just wondering for the referral for the community-based piece, is that zero because nobody would accept? Or is that zero because we don't? Or is that zero because we don't, you know, have anybody? With everything that's been talked about, I'm wondering if that's why nobody's been referred out? Because nobody will take anybody?
To better address that question, let me have Denise Gaines come forward.
She was sitting in the back row, hoping we wouldn't call on her.
She's just about as far back as you can get, too, I noticed.
Good morning. Denise Gaines, Douglas County Corrections. I wasn't sitting. I saved a seat. Your question was about which one is that one?
Is the zero community-based referral number? You know, I don't want to... I mean, is it one because of... in context of everything that we've been talking about, nobody will take anybody? Or is it, we just didn't have anybody? I'm just wondering if there's something beneath that zero number?
The outpatient psychiatric, you know... And I'm wondering if that was an error? Because we've had some... we've had some people referred. And I don't... the number five under the mental health therapy, what I can do is look at that number again. Because I'm thinking that we do have some, at least two that I'm sure of, that were referred to psychiatrists. So let me look at that number again, and I'll send you an email with regard to that. And then correct that in next month's report also.
And I was just wondering, too, if there's a way to do a two- to three-month, like a month trend? And I don't know if it's like, kind of like we do with the long... with the Health Center. I'm just curious now, with this mental health conversation we've been having, if we do ask for referrals, is there a way to give a quick note on why that was? Just so we can get a feel on where that's going?
A snapshot of where we're at?
Yeah, why it's being denied.
Are you wanting the outpatient psychiatric and mental health therapy? Or just the outpatient psychiatric number?
I don't know enough to know which one I want. I know I want the...
You don't know what you don't know.
I think you want to know of the referrals, were they accepted or denied? And the reason for why they were denied.
Okay. And this goes back to some of the other conversations we had previously about some of the clinics, sure. And I'll look into that. And so in next month's numbers, you'll see... do you want that started as of this month?
Yeah, I think if you can just start now, I just want to get a feel. To have a better conversation when this comes up.
Sure, because that's a concern.
Not only here, but outside, because some of this is coming up outside now in reference. And I just want to be able to have a good, full-thought discussion on why we're containing people in capacities, not where is that?
What we're hearing specifically on issues of fortum mental health petitions that are filed, and then they're ordered for, say, they're in for a sex offender. And instead of going to inpatient, they're going, ordered to outpatient. And we don't have the services or the capacity, the providers to which that will provide it. And so we're running into problems as to where to put individuals. And so we're trying to get a handle on that.
And with the sex offenders in particular, that their issue's compounded because of their offense. So on top of the mental illness, you know, how the sex offense, which keeps them out of a lot of services. And so we will... I'll definitely make that piece of the report, so that we can see that. And I think as we get closer to the summit, these issues will be addressed as well. We address these issues at the Emergency Behavioral Health Task Force also. Just the number dwindling services in the community and what... where we're seeing the impact of that. Because we're not just impacted, other service providers are impacted by the same things that we're impacted by as well. And that's one area. So definitely we'll include that in the report.
Okay. Excellent.
Commissioner Tusha?
Denise, in fact, I questioned that this morning, where Chris was bringing it up. And I know you'll send out an email, but make sure that we all get that, because I was curious about those numbers also. But see, at least, I pick on Mark every month. I was not going to pick on you today. So I left that for somebody else. Thank you.
Thank you, Denise.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner, I think what I'll start doing is we plan out what our static numbers were for... or what our numbers were for the previous month. And then we provide you with information regarding referrals. But based on the conversation, and again, recent conversations we've had, what we've probably not presented to you, although we've talked about it anecdotally, are the delays and the denials. So your point's well taken on the trend. So let me see what I can gather for the 2013 calendar year and then track 2014 going forward. And that'll be prepared for the March report. That's an excellent point.
Commissioner Morgan?
Mark, and to the family of Barbara, too. You know, I saw the assault that we had toward corrections officers in the last few days over the weekend. I just want you to know, and I think I speak for sure for the rest of the board, you know, we really appreciate the challenges, the difficult work conditions that our people go through, trying to always do the right thing and being respectful. And some of the terrible abuse that they take from time to time and what takes place in the last four days or whenever. So just let them know that we really appreciate their good service in trying to always do the right thing to the people that are incarcerated there at your facility. And thank you for your service.
Thank you very much, Commissioner.
Anything else?
No, ma'am.
I have no further lights. Again, on behalf of the Board, thank you all for being here today. And we leave with making sure Barb will be with us forever. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion, Joe?
Second. Please vote.
Motion passes.
We will move to the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Craft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Tusha, Madam Chair.
Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, February 4, 2014. And item B, approval of claims submitted for payment processed through Tuesday, February 18, 2014.
Motion for item B?
Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes.
Consent agenda, seven items, A through G. Any questions or comments on the consent? Please vote.
Mr. Morgan? Motion passes.
Citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to the public hearing. There is a transfer budget dollars appropriated in the original 2013-14 adopted budget that were set aside for future salary increases and provide additional budget dollars due to approved grants for the youth center, sheriff, county administration, and the juvenile assessment center departments. The increased budget for the 911 surcharge due to additional revenues received. Increased budgets for the state institution and extension. And Joe, I don't know if you have any further, but again, it's a budget adjustment.
Yeah, this is... usually, we do this twice a year. And this is the first one where we'll adjust the budgets to reflect all the salary increases and union contract settlements that have taken place year-to-date. And that adjustment goes against the salary adjustment. So in essence, it's budgeted for. Then we're approving some departmental budgets, a great majority of which are driven by increase in grant revenue. And then there are two departments that are showing an incremental increase in their budget without a revenue offset. And that's state institutions, which were increasing by 175,000 due to an increase in the number of competency hearings. And these competency hearings are the result of court orders by judges. And it's a competency hearing to evaluate their mental health. So I think that kind of relates back to the whole issue that we've been dealing with in a... from a couple of different areas recently about the increase in mental health issues in criminal cases especially. And then there's also a $10,000 adjustment for extension, which is due... they bought a new security system. They were anticipating that they would use funds last year, and they should have accrued for it. They had some turnover in their administrative staff. They didn't get the accrual right. So they didn't really have it go against last year's budget. And this year's budget has been tough for them. So they really need to have their budget increased by the 10,000 to fund the security system that they bought. And so those are all the summary of the budget adjustments.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Is there a motion to approve the... oh, I'm sorry. Is there anyone wishing to speak during the public hearing? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. What's the will of the Board? Second. Please vote.
Motion passes.
Next, we'll move to the Finance Committee. Commissioners Duda and Morgan, do you have anything? I do not.
The only thing I'd say is Thursday, we have our strategic planning meeting. Joe's preparing some things for us to discuss concerning the budget, plus some others. We'll have some comments concerning next year's budget, or this year's budget, really. So we'll be discussing that, plus numerous other items that day, this Thursday, at the Extension Office, starting at 8:30 sharp. Am I correct?
You are correct. And I guess I do need to know whether or not... I've heard from everybody except for Commissioner Duda and Commissioner Craft as to whether they're going to attend. I have found out since that Commissioner Rogers and Commissioner Boyle will not be there. And that I already knew about you leaving early.
1:30.
And so, you know...
And I'm going to be late.
And you're going to be late, well, Commissioner Duda potentially, too.
You what?
I had to off. I couldn't turn it back.
Well, I guess the point is, is that, you know, it's kind of silly. I have to decide if we're going to move forward with it, if there's only going to be potentially two of us at the afternoon session. And if that's the case, that's fine. I just need to know so that I can reschedule this. I don't want all of our elected officials and department heads coming out and spending the day with none of us participating in what is supposed to be a full-board strategic plan. And so I just need to know. If you could let me know by the end of the day whether or not you will be there, I would really appreciate that.
And I've already commented that I won't be there. Plus, when I got the invitation, I responded that I wouldn't be.
Okay. All right.
And I intend to be there for most of them. I have to leave for a little while late morning. And of course, Building Commission, we pushed up early. We'll come and send the Building Commission's over.
All right. Commissioner Rogers?
Your schedule, I would love to. I want to be in the discussion. It's just that... yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Tusha?
You know, and I know we have this set up. And I know it's difficult for everybody to get together. But I firmly believe in the strategic planning. And I firmly believe that we should all be there and attend and try to be there all day. And, you know, things happen. But I personally would like to reschedule this, so that way everybody can attend. But just to let you know that.
The... one of the difficulties I had when it was scheduled was I was not getting the emails because of Google. And I think many of you are aware of that situation on my computer. It wasn't my computer's fault, but I didn't have the Google deal. But anyway, I am now in half for some weeks. I think we should still go ahead. I mean, we'll have five hours of doing things there, discuss certain items. I think if we have another one... And I also think sometimes meeting for six hours, thereabouts, is a good amount of time. And then maybe you're having another one at a later time with some of the other issues. You know, I know some people are planning to attend. That would be the ideal, that maybe, you know, we do it again in April or May, another one. And do it from like 8:30 to 2 o'clock or something like that. And we go right through lunch. So it isn't like we leave for an hour and a half or an hour for lunch. So, you know, I think we put forth the best effort, start to cover some items, come back to some items to discuss again, would be my suggestion.
Okay. But, and I appreciate that. But my concern is by the time we have the introductions and, you know, people speaking and stuff like that, by the time we get to the actual strategic planning, I'm afraid that there's going to be nobody there. And that's where my concern is at. That's the only reason why I was asking it to be postponed.
Well, I'll have some discussions with staff a little bit after this. And then I'll be sure to get back to all of you. But we'll make it... we'll make it work somehow.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, there's one item under the Child and Youth Services. It's an approval of an agreement with the Family First for day and evening reporting services. And I just had one question on this. Is this the... we talked in the committee meeting about part of these dollars being used. Are these the dollars for vest? Or is there another pot that'll be coming to approve those? Because I don't think we've heard from the Crime Commission yet. Does anybody know? Commissioner Rogers?
Yes. My presentation earlier dated, this won't affect...
This won't affect that? Okay, good. Okay. Is there a motion to approve? Okay. Either way, please vote.
Motion passes.
Next, we'll move to Community Services Committee. There is one agenda item, and that is the discussion on the Visitors Bureau interlocal with the city. And Commissioner Rogers, is that a leftover?
Yes.
It's here, the introduction. Okay.
Yeah. And I was going to turn over Commissioner Rogers, because he had some concerns, and see if those concerns have been met.
And I'll let... well, one, for some reason, this contract won't come up on... when I hit it on the website. But I still... I understand enough from reading it. The clause in there that had concern, basically from the last time we met, we were talking about the finance issue. Commissioner Borgeson, Joe, Patrick, and I had a meeting. And in consideration, we came to terms where I think we suggest the compromise of the city maintaining their increases, but doing it over... and we increase it over a 10-year period to get it there and give it some longevity. The contract we got back had the increases, but it didn't, to me, if I'm interpreting it right, legally bind them. To me, that's the issue. The previous contract we had was for five years, and it didn't have the binding. And now this has the binding. And the whole intent of the meeting was to try to solidify continued support, understanding the financial pressures. And that's when we brought up the suggestion of extending it out longer and eventually getting us there. There were some other discussions talked about. So, you know, quite frankly, that's the core of the issue. If that's removed, I think we're confident in doing the 10-year that gets them up to that point gradually.
So you would like to amend the contract by removing the portion that doesn't bind us?
All the references that don't bind, pay them. I mean, right now, it's basically a clause there that says, we'll pay you if you got the money.
And the issue I had...
And the issue I have also is, it doesn't talk about the county being able to cancel the agreement should the city not hold up to their part about the $200,000 increase each and every year. I do not see that in there.
And I think Kristin's comments to that thought that we could always fall back on the 60 or 90-day clause to get out in some degree. But, you know, it
If I may, the way I read it, that was for the renewal of it at the end. Was it, or was that for?
No, you're
Yes.
That's a valid point.
Diane Carlson, Deputy County Administrator. The document before you was provided by the city. The red, red-lined recommendations are what the county attorney suggested. It is a 10-year agreement with the city's contributions increasing by $200,000 each year. But as Commissioner Rogers pointed out, it does not, it does not bind the city every year because it has language in there that requires the city council to approve those appropriations during their budget price process. So the county attorney is working with the city attorney to see if they can come up with alternative language. But if that can't be accomplished, then the county attorney has recommended that there be a 90-day or 60-day termination clause so that in the event the city council does not appropriate the funds, then the county would be able to terminate the contract, you know, effective the following year in January.
So may I suggest we lay this over until we get definitive language?
Right. You don't, you don't meet next week, and then you have one more meeting before the extension expires. So I guess what I would recommend is yes, to allow the city and the county attorney's office to, to continue trying to work this out. But short of that, we could have another extension on for the end of February to allow more time.
I'm satisfied with that. Everybody else?
Yeah, but I, you know, I want to bring it up here, at least to get my personal thought on it. You know, the original agreement we got was for the five-year period. You know, five years didn't have any of the hooks in it. And it had the same premise of the funding guarantee. And also, a point that was discussed too is that, you know, that contract went out to 18. And there was discussion that we had in respects to binding future conferences and boards. That contract bound the next council, whoever it may be, whoever the next administration may be. And so, you know, I think if we go, you know, to me, just thinking through it, I mean, you know, the union contracts we signed, the jail contract we signed, buying somebody out in the future.
Yes.
The whole point of the discussion is, are we going to, you know, I understand the financial pressures, but we have to get that up. And I just think at some point the board needs to, I think it's a bigger discussion that we have to have room with both parties. But if for some reason this didn't come back, you know, I think we have a discussion, truthfully, about a two-year agreement. And in that two-year agreement, the board have some discussion about regionalization. And that means a partnership with POT and Sarpy County. And that's something that we could definitely look into.
And I don't disagree with most of what you said. I, I would be satisfied with going back to the original agreement where we locked him in for five years. And what we want to do is, as you suggested in different words, is hold their feet to the fire. Hold them accountable for what they benefit from. And don't just let the county, you know, there are other ways we could handle this. And the city seems to be looking at it very lightly without, well, it's a windfall for the city. You know, they just don't understand the gravity of their not acting on this. So we'll lay this over for a while, see what they come back with. Hopefully, somebody's listening. Yes?
Can I make, and
Please do.
Commissioner Kraft, just, and I think it would be fair in their defense, I don't, I think the core of the meeting was, I don't think they, they took it lightly. It all is into this money situation. And that's when we went, we said, okay, 10 years. You know, we won't do the five, we won't ask you there. Let's just take it out 10. And that gets us there. So I just want to make sure, I think everybody got the point of it.
You think so? Okay, good.
No, yeah, I think they're, they're, the question was the money. And if, you know, we get the 10, without that clause in there, I'm fine with that, with that, because it, you know, I think it's sensitive to their financial issues and where it needs to get over that period of time.
Good. Okay, very good. Thank you. Commissioner Tusha?
And I know we're going to lay this over, but unless they make changes with being binding and with the out, I won't vote for it even today or next time if they bring it back without any changes. So.
Commissioner Duda?
I was just going to say, it looks pretty good to me, as is. I'm fine with laying it over. I think your concerns about the termination, I think they are addressed in here. I mean, it pretty clearly says in red that either party can terminate it for any reason, giving 90 days notice. So I think we are protected there. I'm not sure that you can commit a city council eight years out to keep bumping by $200,000 their funding into this. I'll take the attorney's word for that, but our protection there is that we get out if they don't live up to that, to their end of the deal. I'm okay with laying it over as long as we get it addressed in a timely fashion. But I think what we've got before us, I would be satisfied moving forward today. Thank you.
Teresa?
Teresa, your County Attorney's Office. The changes in red were made by the County Attorney's Office. Have, they have not been agreed to by the city.
Right.
So I just want to make clear where we are in the negotiations at this point. The last draft was from our side, the county side. It has been sent to the city and it is under review. So we don't have an agreement with regards to the 90-day out clause. So I think a layover would be advisable and give our office additional time to work with the city. And if we are unable to reach an agreement by the 25th, we would recommend a 60-day extension.
Yeah.
Okay. Got it.
Okay. Next is the Human Resources. We have, I'm sorry, Commissioner, did you still?
Do you want a motion to lay it over?
No. It was just, we had discussion or action, so we'll just bring it back. The Human Resources, a weekly personnel report from civil service as presented. If no one has any questions or comments. Next is the Weekly CAO Report on Staff Assaults.
There was an assault at Corrections on Friday. There was no major injuries that occurred.
Okay. The Legislative Report, it is in your packet. There was good testimony given on Wednesday at the Judiciary Committee on LB 464. The concerns about the cost were laid out very well by Lancaster County and NACO. And so they will be taking those under advisement. And there should be, we haven't seen a, they said there was going to be a revision, but we haven't seen that yet, right? Okay, just wanted to make sure. We should be getting in a revised part of that. Senator Crist is working on that. And so as soon as we get that, we will let you know. Then there was much conversation during the judiciary on the supervised release and probation, office, the increase in probation officers and the whole prison reform. And that, that was good conversation. And Marcos handled our, in the judiciary, the hearing on LB 821, which provides a public benefit exemption for burials and cremation of the unclaimed body, which Senator Laughton Ball picked up for us. And I understand that went well, and there were no opponents on that. And other than that Thanks. And other than that, whatever additional revisions are coming on any, any one of those, we'll get those out to you as soon as we hear them because it is a moving, moving target at this point. Any other legislation that, oh, I did get a call from Renee Frye, who is working with Al Davis on the bill that, remember when we brought up about the TIF? And there was conversation with you and Commissioner Boyle about, it's not that we're against TIF, but that we as counties should have a seat at the table or some conversation within that process because it affects our bottom line as well. And so Senator Al Davis' bill does that. And I lose, my, my mind is not thinking, I can't remember the number. But I will be talking to Renee about that. But, so he, he did hear that and is moving forward with trying to see if we have some input into the process in some way. Commissioner Kraft?
Marcos, could you send us a copy of that bill? Thank you.
And I can't remember the number. We'll find it though. But it was, that was good to hear as well.
Yeah, definitely.
So with that, again, the report's in your pocket. There aren't any other issues that I would bring up if someone else has. There is no need for executive session.
Really?
So we do have a Community Services Committee in room 903 immediately following this board meeting. We talked about our strategic plan Thursday, February 13th at 8:30 at the Extension. And then remember, our offices are closed February 17th in observance of President's Day. And the board will not meet February 18th. And then the next scheduled one is Tuesday, February 25th. Motion to adjourn? Yeah.
Yeah.
And once we adjourn, if, if you all could stay for a second, I would like someone to take a picture for us. The Girl Scouts sent a letter asking us to, well, they asked me to put this on and take a selfie. And then post it to our, to my Facebook and Twitter. But I thought it would be fun if we held it, if I held it up and then everybody stood around and we put it on our Douglas County to say our Douglas County supports it. And you guys can hold up the Girl Scout. So, okay, so stick around.
Do we get a cookie?
You do get a cookie. I can't eat them, so you get them. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
I thought I, Lee, would you take a picture for me?
Motion passes.
And if we stand just right in front here?